For this meeting, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, Father. Us all, Lord, we thank you for your power and your grace, Lord. We think that we're, you, we are your children, Father. We just ask that you send your Holy Spirit in this meeting tonight, Father. We ask that your will be done tonight, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, Father, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can sit. Madam clerk, if you'll please call and roll.
Councilwoman McGray, here. Councilwoman Bo Sutherland, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mayor Anderson, here.
Thank you very much. We have a request to serve on the fire pension board. Ms. Samantha, sorry for messing up your last name, Mutres Sammy. Been pronouncing it for years, hopefully I finally get it right this time.
You said it correctly.
So now this person is not currently on the board?
She was on the police pension, but her term is finishing.
Okay.
And so...
She wants to be reappointed.
She, she had the option of being reappointed to the police when she heard there was an opening for the fire.
I see.
So my understanding, as we've been wanting, she chose to be the one in the fire department. And that's why she, even though she applied for both, her first choice would be served on the fire pension.
And there's an opening on there right now.
Yeah.
So this will leave an opening on the police pension as well, so we're...
Well, there won't be one she goes to.
Yeah.
If she goes to the fire, there'll be an opening. So probably knows there's an opening for the police pension that Samantha goes to the fire.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else to add to this?
But she's currently on the policeman and she wants to be on the fire.
Her term is ended.
Her term is ended.
Okay. I don't have a problem.
Okay. Anyone here to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Samantha Mutres Sammy to be on the fire pension board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman McGray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Under the consent agenda, we have the Resolution 2020-01. We discussed it at our last meeting, basically saying that it was a good idea to keep it until we had reached a resolution of some grants. Are we done yet or not? Chief, go ahead.
All right, I'm here. We are still not with, done with our grants, but I have talked to all the people in charge of the grants, and they're saying that we do not need the state of emergency to get those. So we can end it if that's what you want to do.
Jerry, you have anything to add to that? Okay, does the council wish to end it or keep it going?
So if we end it, that means that everything will go back to the way it was, not only just for us, because it's back that way now, but for the entire city of Avon Park.
Do you care to talk about what the differences are now and what would change, what wouldn't?
I don't think anything would change. It just gives me powers to do things without going to councils, all does. And, and I haven't used them, I don't believe I do need them. But as far as what you mean going back to normal in Avon Park?
It'll never be normal.
Well, yeah, it's, well, that'd be a new norm, but it won't be the one that we know it is. But you have made, you know, no decisions on wearing masks or anything like that, so there's nothing that would, would change.
Then everyone still, yeah, everyone still wears their masks downstairs. I mean, all those things are going to be needed.
Correct.
So the downstairs is open? I don't know, I haven't been to City Hall good long because of the...
Oh, well, it's, it's been open, you just can't get up close where you can breathe on the girls or, or that.
So somebody want to pay the water bill, they can go up there and pay it. They don't have to drop it in the box and then...
Actually, several months ago, we put a box inside so they can drop it on the inside. And pretty much everybody's gotten pretty used to it, know where it is now and they drop it, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, every time I go in there and sign checks or whatever, I mean, there's always people in there that are asking questions to people at the window. So it's, it's obviously being serviced in that regard. I don't, I don't know of anybody that can't do what they normally would do in there. That accurate?
No, that's accurate. And if they, the utility billing employees actually have masks on and they come out and meet with people if they need to meet with them or take their license and make it, the fact they found out that they weren't making copies of licenses. And I said, well, we will do that, we're not going to send them off to CBS or Walgreens to make a copy of the license.
I have one other question. Are we going to open up the community center for rental now because the emergency is open?
It has been open.
Oh, I, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, you made a decision on that a few months ago, it's been open.
Let me ask, what's the protocol right now for, for code enforcement? Can people come in to code enforcement or do they have the, what's the, how do they do that?
No, they, they, they're not opening, they, they meet them at the door, go, they don't let them just come in and walk around. And they have all the forms outside, seems to be working well. In fact, I knock on the door and they come, or the old mayor or talk to me.
So Jerry was the only one that made a comment about keeping the emergency or not because it was some, what, governor directive?
Well, no.
I have a problem with it remaining as it is, it makes it, it needs to lie.
I'm indifferent to it, just that most council have anything to say about it, so I figured I'd put the opportunity out there.
It doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
So we will leave it as is.
One question there would be, it's you, Mark, are we going to do anything about giving the public access to upstairs?
As of right...
I mean, I've got some issues, but...
As of right now, no, I mean, it's, the COVID is still running loose and just to have people walking upstairs, I mean, it's, it's worked out. In fact, I've gone downstairs, met with people, I can go down and, and I meet them in the basement where we can, you know, be separated and that. And as of right now, no one upstairs has got COVID. I can't say that for utility billing, we're three of them who have some.
So anybody who wants to meet with staff and tell somebody downstairs and up all upstairs and see if they can arrange it?
Yes. We're, we're still trying to be, is any of these other customers served? In fact, there was a couple of things last week I saw in the, like, I got, kind of, I had, was on our need of those, so...
Very good. Next up, we have the minutes from January 25th. Council regular meeting, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the amendment from January 25th, January 27th.
Yeah? Yep, that's fine.
The second.
We have a motion for both sets of minutes. Is there any questions on those minutes or changes? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman McGray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 01-2021, we have capacity fees. Rick will be on this one. We've gotten some additional information that was requested by council the last time, basically looking at what some of the other municipalities do, what their rates are. Other than that, it's the only change that I saw, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any questions for Rick on that or recommendations?
I think that with our increases, we're going to be right in line with everyone as it is right now.
That's what it appeared. That's what it appeared to me as well.
And I would like you to take some consideration.
Hey, Rick, Rick, we'll have to get you the microphone there, bud. I'm going to move up.
Move up, huh? Okay.
Depends on how you look at it, man.
What you, if you look at our proposed fees, they, they are lower or just about as low as anybody else's existing fees. You look at the proposed fees, they're still lower than most of these communities' existing fees. And we know that those utilities, those communities will be raising their fees. So we're going to be down towards the lower end of water and wastewater.
Rick, did you happen to look at what the ERC values are for any of these other communities?
Well, the ERCs generally are about three, 2.5 and three. But that's what we're using now right for, for water. For wastewater, we're using 159 gallons a day. That's due mostly because no increases have been made through the years. So if we had indexed our capacity fees at even one and a half or two percent per year, we'd be in line with, with most of what the other communities are.
Okay. Any other questions for Rick on this?
I think he put a lot of work into it, and thank you for this extra stuff.
You, you answered all the very many questions that we put to you.
Well, that's, I appreciate that.
Your patience on that.
That's fine.
Andy, I'm sure he's going to give Andy a lot of credit.
Andy, Andy, Andy's a much more, much research.
Thank you very much, Andy.
So looking at proving under option A that he proposed, the changes are on the, on the lower amount?
Yeah, it'd be the lower amounts of the proposed.
Now, I make the motion to go ahead and approve the option A for increase in water wastewater fees.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
To be clear, there, there's not multiple options in this, or, or, it's just, there is only one option, right?
Right, we're, we're going with the existing value system, we're not going to put new...
Right, right. Great.
So I just have a question.
Go ahead.
If you talked about last week or two weeks ago and doing an incremental increase over time versus doing it all at once, is this going to be an all at once thing or incremental to accommodate the current?
As proposed right now, it's, it's all at once.
As it is, all at, all at once, okay.
Yep. I mean, incremental is not a bad idea, it's my book. The, the biggest thing that I have a problem with is how the ERC value is going to affect a new construction, just because in some instances it would triple or even quadruple somewhat speeds depending on use of the business and things like that. So if you draw the short stick and you want to build a couple of different types of businesses, it's, it's not great news.
That would be the same thing if they did, if they set it up.
Well, and Wachula is free, so...
Yeah.
Potentially, you know, $100,000 savings, so it's definitely make you...
Wachula has gone ahead and kept theirs at zero for the last five years.
They, they suspended it in 2015.
Right.
Was it all, was it the entire county or just Wachula?
Wachula.
Okay.
Obviously, the point is a promotional thing. They realize that they're not going to be able to fund future water growth, but they're trying to take the short-term gain, basically.
And we don't have any projected newcomers coming in, like, right now. Anyone's called in and said, I want to start a business. Have you had any requests or proposals from?
Yeah, there's, there's, I mean, talk to the Chamber of Commerce, they'll tell you there's a lot of things going on.
In Avon Park? Inside the city?
As far as inside the city limits, I don't know, but as far as connecting to the water system, yeah. Give them a call, or do it.
I haven't received one. The past one was the, the Washington, which they're building now, which is, that's for our way, the 790.
Are, are, are any of these businesses anticipating a, a slower rate of increase in order to move here?
What do you mean?
That's another question, he said that there have been some that have been looking into it, that the Chamber knows of several businesses.
Yeah, I doubt they've got as far as to see what the fees are for connecting to water. I would, I would highly doubt that 99.9% of the population of Avon Park is aware that we have ERCs and what the heck they mean. Yeah, unless you're looking at building a new building, you, you wouldn't even care. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Instead of making it increments, but we just, just like, you know, 90 days start date.
Yeah, I don't think 90 days is going to make much of a difference if they're looking at building a structure. It's, it's, you know, unless you're two years out, you're probably not going to help them much.
Okay, I believe that as is. I'm ready for a vote.
All right, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman McGray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Motion passed 3 to 1.
All right, we have the detailed budget report for support, finance coordinator.
This is informational, your first quarter, informational items, first quarter.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Danielle on this?
And it's, it's a month or so late because of our computer problems, but...
Can we go back to a second? You guys approved the increase in the rate, the ordinance was never there.
That's right, we didn't read the ordinance.
I know you guys are going to be moving forward on that, so let's, let's do it right.
Okay, let's have Gordon, you read there, Jerry?
Jerry's earnings.
The ordinance says City of Avon Park 4 provides for volume disciples as to this council intent committing the city code under Part 2, Division 3, and in sections 98-2 and 98-3, providing for general requirements and any separate trust accounts for collecting capacity fees and proper accounting and usage thereof. Remembering that many other sections under Division 3 provide for manner of calculation of tax and meter fees, calculation of capacity fees and to impose new water facility charges, capacity impact fees based on Ford and Rural Water Association capacity fee study and report, removing references to refunds and capacity fee, removing references to capacity fee plan plans provided for the countries providing the structures there, calculation, review of the different codes, ordinances, and resolutions, severability, and providing effective data.
Okay, so we'll need a new motion then?
Yes.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, that's right.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman McGray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Motion passed 3 to 1.
Thank you. Item number eight, we have detailed budget report here for information. Is there any questions for Danielle on this report? Seeing none, move on to item number nine, Resolution 2021-01, this is a budget amendment.
Yeah. So the Resolution of City Council, City of Avon Park 4, amending budget for 2020 to 2021, just for here, providing effective date.
Any...
Yeah, well, I put it in the background, it's classic Clayton, as you know. We got a ton of work still to get done out there, but there was two main areas that we had to get fixed. One was their office, every time it rained, it ran inside. We got that fixed, it cost $7,500. I got, actually Rick walked out, but this started when Robert was here and trying to get someone out there for a whole scope of it. We got one guy out there and he said, are you kidding me? I, I've never worked on this big of a building, I couldn't even give you a scope on it. But we got, so we got this other area that leaks extremely bad, has for years, but it got worse with the hurricane. It's one of the three areas actually in the report by the engineer that was hired by the insurance company. And it's their restrooms and their break room. And we've got quotes on that, the lowest one was $20,500 from Cobb Roofing. And we need to get it fixed, and I know there was money. We got the $24,470 in insurance, which we covered probably my second month here. And I'm asking to move that in so we can use that to get that fixed. And there's, I, I talked to them out there today, and the seed barn is still something we need to look at. It's really bad, but this will take care of, as I put in here, an urgent need of repair for this area of the roof. And it's not a Band-Aid, it's a, it's a permanent fix. He's one, other areas are getting fixed, but we've got to stop it leaking in there.
I think we need to move forward with this as quickly as possible because not only do we have some rainy season coming up, but we got hurricane season coming up. So I don't want to take some of this work, but it could take several months, so...
And there's, like I said, this is, there's a still ton of work out there. And actually, Rick had talked to Cool and Cobb in, in Mason, gave him $10,000 if he'd do a scope of work. And I told Rick, I think between him and David, our new guy, and the report that I read again from the engineer who did it for the insurance company, I think we could probably get a scope of work for free instead of $10,000 on a rest. And then we're going to have to go out the bid and find the money to fix, because the seed barn, I don't think they've used for years, really, so... But we've got to, we've got to show them, number one, we're showing we're doing something, but we've got to stop this leaking.
So, so all you want to do is just move the funds, right?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking for?
Well, yeah, it's, it's going to increase the budget, so...
Yeah.
And this will come as a...
This is, this is the insurance money that we received a few months back after we finally finalized that.
Okay.
$89,000 was the insurance payment?
No, it was $24,470. That was probably a different building. No, we received $24,470 for classic Clayton.
We received it the last week of September.
I'm thinking of the pool payment, sorry.
Yeah.
There was a mention of a contractor that you intended to use. I identified that as, as one of my relatives, so Jerry, this is just the budget amendment, that's not an award of a contract, but I want to make sure that I'm not in a conflict, being that he said who they intend to give it to.
Okay, a budget amendment.
Okay.
But if you feel like you might have some risk, you know, so you can always abstain.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So I'm moved that we approve Resolution 2020-21-1, second. Do I have a question?
Do we have?
We're not, we're not moving, Mike, we're just going to approving for this...
Budget amendment.
The bucks we paid, okay.
Just approving a budget amendment, that's all.
This is going to increase the current budget to cover...
These, these repayers.
Correct. The money that we received from the insurance company.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there was a motion?
Yes.
End of second, all right. We have a motion and seconds, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman McGray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
I will abstain as it potentially involves a contractor that is directly related to me.
Do you got your form to fill out?
I do. All right. Under attorney updates, item number 10, have the approval of amendment to the city manager's employment contract.
First amendment to employment agreement between Marquise and City of Avon Park is, as you verbally concurred with each other on the last meeting, just putting it in writing.
Okay. Any questions on that? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve item under E10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, we will call a roll.
Councilwoman McGray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
There's an item to add for Jerry here. There was a discussion in our last meeting about looking for a airport attorney. He has provided us with some recommendations.
So we have two possibilities for attorney firms, law firms that could represent us in this matter. We had three, but one dropped out due to conflict. We have the, I'll just take it in order, the people I spoke to. Mr. Weet is here with regards to Murray Marine and Herman Firm. The, their stuff, their attorney of biographies here and we had a letter, their email address. Mr. Wee, like to make any presentation?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Bier. I appreciate the time today, I appreciate having a moment to speak to the council. I, I won't take too long, but just to give you a little bit of background on our firm, we're a small boutique firm in Tampa, we also have offices in Miami. And we do more than just aviation, but I would say aviation is our focus. We have a number of board-certified aviation attorneys. We have represented the Hillsborough County Aviation Authority for about 20 years at this point. Speaking personally, my work is about two-thirds aviation, one-third business. On the aviation side, I do a good deal of transactional work. Negotiated a number of airport leases, we represent any number of fixed base operators. Our background brings us into contact with a number of FARs, number of airport rules and regulations. And I, I think that our background, and I can, you know, ask Jerry to kind of chime in on this with respect to the details we provided in, to him in writing today. But our experience, we believe, would be ideal for the, for the city's needs in this circumstance.
So I, I looked at this firm because they had certified attorneys in aviation. As I understand, they don't have any P3 experience, but they have a substantial amount of business experience with airports. They listed partners at 275 an hour, socials at 225 an hour, paralegals at 115 an hour. And so, moving on to next firm, Wyserota, sort of, I knew the other store, Beerman's, Beerman's here? Was here?
He's here.
He's here.
I'm here.
Okay, would you like to make a presentation?
Thank you very much, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor and council members. I'm Mitch Beerman, my firm is Wyserota Health, Man, Cole and Beerman. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
We're based in South Florida, we have, and, and we have an office in Tampa. We have three offices in South Florida and one office in Tampa. I, my personal background is, I, I've been practicing law for 30 years now. My first job out of law school was representing Miami Dade Aviation Department. And that work encompassed not only representing Miami International Airport, which is one of the largest airports in the country, but also our general aviation field. And from that, I grew my career to represent both airports and airport developers throughout Florida and throughout the United States. And I've been retained not only in Florida, but also in places like Jefferson County, Colorado, and, and Redding County, Pennsylvania, and even in other countries like San Lucia. My practice involves representing some of the largest businesses in the aviation field, including American Airlines, but also representing, you know, towns like yours, which Golden, Colorado is one. And they have on the table a big P3 unsolicited offer like you do. And I think it's very important that you have a firm that has not only the aviation background, but also the background in environmental law and real estate law in land use and zoning, and specifically FAA restrictions on land use and zoning, so that you can properly evaluate what did the offer that you're receiving and determine whether it's a good offer for you, whether there are other potential offers out there, and all of the different ways that it affects not only the airport, but the rest of your community and the surrounding communities. One thing that I learned, you know, in, in recently in the process of dealing with Jefferson County, Colorado, is that there were neighboring communities outside the jurisdiction of Jefferson County that have a stake in this and that have the ability to, if not stop the proposal from happening, at least have a say in that matter through various forms of appeal. And I think that it's important to consider all of those things. And that's why having the, you know, not only my expertise, but that of my partners, and we have a 75 lawyer firm, will be helpful. Now, I will note that my rates are considerably higher than the alternative. And we, you know, that's consistent with this market for this type of expertise in P3. But one thing I will say about it is that hopefully in a P3 situation, you're not going to be paying my bills. The, the offeror will be paying them. And that's one of the first things that you need to negotiate. Make sure that you're not coming out of pocket for evaluating someone else's profit-making venture. And so, those are some of the considerations I leave you with. If we don't work together on this one, I hope we have another opportunity to work together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bier. Now, your, their fees are on, take 20 of this slide, show that they sent. But you mentioned that was, was $100 less than that, is that...
I would accept $100 less per hour per attorney than what you have in front of you if the city winds up paying the bills itself. If the city is able to, or if we were able to negotiate for the offeror to pay for the legal fees, then it would be the higher fees.
Thank you. Do, would you have any idea how many hours, something like this, would rack up?
Are you asking me?
I think, I think, I think it would be difficult, that question for him to answer at this point because he doesn't even know the scope of the deal.
Okay.
But I, but I, I think with the stages, you know, if we did, whoever we hired, I think the first stage is, do you want to do it at all? We need your advice as to whether it's something we want to consider or, and then we would have to tighten up what, what the potential deal could look like. Because right now, you know, the last thing we saw would probably not be acceptable to the city. Because right now, you know, the last thing we saw would probably not be acceptable to the city. But, you know, can, can we come to a, a rough idea as to what terms the city would step? And you know, it's like, without having to put it all into a contract, but as a summary, you know, and I, I think that would be a place to go. But obviously, based on what Mr. Beerman said, probably the first thing we want to negotiate is how much they're going to pay. I think they mentioned paying between five and seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand, what the agreement had in it?
Yeah.
What they proposed.
Yeah, they defined closing, you know, in their contract as being one by our own airport back in fifty years. But, you know, if their defined closing here is being our signed contract, treaty of leases, which I think that's what they need, then, yeah, seven thousand, but we're not covering. But that would be something that we'd have to discuss, start with.
Have you, have either party looked at the contract that was presented to us a few weeks ago?
I believe I sent it to both of them.
Okay.
I know I sent it to at least one, one asked for it, but I, I think I sent it to both.
Does anybody have any comments about that contract, have you seen it?
I was not able to review it. I, I don't, I don't believe I received a, a copy of it.
Well, this is the summary, the summary that they sent us.
Jerry, what about conflicts? I mean, there's a bunch of people with organizations that are signed up that's directors and part of this and that and all these relationships. Is there any different conflict in these individuals?
They were not, you were trying to, we want to know who's on the other side. Obviously, before we contract the services that they're keeping into. But it's unlikely, especially people in Wallbury, that there's going to be conflict, but we don't know.
Well, if we want to negotiate something with these people, don't we have to at least have some general idea of, you're probably going to be in for a hundred thousand, a million, I mean, we have some type of a number.
It's hard to call that at this moment, really, just, you know, to get to the point where you're doing the contract and they're paying for it. Then honestly, you can negotiate down to the last front, like if the city's on foot for a big bill. Obviously, you want to be, you know, try to figure that out.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what is the best way to actually get the ball rolling and get the ball to go.
Jerry, let me ask a question. As far as the, who would decide who's going to pay either one of these attorneys?
Well, obviously, you're going to be contracted, because they have a contract.
Would you get a ring of honor or something? Some say four of them.
Well, I would want to see, I would want to see the, the folks on the other side, put up their seven thousand before we spend seventy thousand dollars with thirty-three, somebody to review. But I, I think, like I said, I think there's some things we have to get some hump, we have to get over, which we might have took a lot of, many, many hours of negotiation. Okay, that, you know, that is, do we have a possibility deal? When we get a summary, what kind of terms are possible? You know, if you're not going to ever accept fifty, fifty years, then, you know, what would you do to accept that? I didn't do it for five years, you know, what do you expect? Then obviously, we talked about last time was, wasn't a partnership, they're proposing, but what do you want for partnership? You want, you know, twenty percent of everything that they make or, you know, that they're, you need to get at least, you know, some reasonable percentage of what they're making out of the airports and shares.
And that's what these guys, what either one of these guys has recommended to us?
Well, you know, I'd say that the Marine Law Firm is, is strong regarding management of airports and aviation. We certify in that area, but you can reach great to go to Wyserota, that's the firm that has that deal before. But the Marine Firm is actually pretty, less expensive than Wyserota. Those are the things to be considered.
Well, can I just throw a little wrench in here into the attorney? I know we're discussing the attorneys and stuff, but we also have this Brett Ford here. And it's not an attorney that will, that has an incredible resume dealing with actual hemp farmers, being a part of one.
Well, I think that was.
So my, my question.
I just brought that up. So Brett Ford is the consultant, he's not an attorney. If you ask me, consider consultants and, and so, but it's not, it's not mutually exclusive.
So I guess my question is, you're not moving to a new place to jump in here, doing the due diligence aspect of this. Would that be more a consultant line or would that be a pretty?
Well, I think the terms and things, you know, that we want to make sure that we're right, it's absolutely going to be an attorney. But I think if you were going to vet these people on the other side, I think that'd be something perhaps that Mr. Ford would be able to see with this history of aviation, which is pretty extensive.
So what I like about Mr. Ford is that he currently isn't qualified.
I think that's actually a, wasn't a P three as much as it was a, a privatization.
Yeah. Right now, he's contracted as president of Airways International Airport, that's all he's developers. And we are, we're dealing with developers.
And ironically, what they presented first wasn't more the privatization than a P three, because P three has its, I doubt, partnership in it.
So could it be? Could it be fair to say that you have to control the preliminary vetting and the cleaning up and checking out all of the different individuals that are on these boards? Because that takes a lot of research that not necessarily is legal in nature. You know, it comes up with validity of the, of the actual business model that's being presented to us. Or is that an attorney thing? Is the attorney going to look at the business model and make a recommendation? Yeah, this is great, you need to go ahead and sign a contract.
Well, that's up to you, but getting offered a major consult, you know, he didn't say that he wanted to pay five thousand dollars a month. Now, I, I, I read that, that decision, I mean, how do you want to approach that? But obviously, from my perspective, I feel like, you know, the whole, what's involved is that is really the contract. And what kind of terms we're going to be able to. But, you know, if it's, when the contract doesn't matter, then if the people on the other side are not competent, but proceed with that.
I agree with you, Jerry. I think that we should go with the attorney, I would do nothing against the, the consultant. But I have experienced this one time before, and I prefer an appurtenance attorney to make recommendations to, as to what, that's what the city of Aon Park. And then maybe we could rely on a consultant right off. But my thought is, well, and I look at the consultants TV and I see one hundred percent hands-on aviation experience, opening up airports, dealing with businesses, currently dealing with airports and businesses combined. And that's something that the current attorneys don't have. They're not working in that realm. This guy, Adam, part of Lockard, he booked up at Nixon. You know, he has a lot of experience with aviation and people that come into airports where business matters. And so to me, that consulting angle has a bigger reach in terms of his depth of dealing with businesses day to day. And I don't know how many years, what year, nineteen sixty-seven, to currently, he has an extensive experience in that realm. And then it get to the point where he's able to look at the, at the business model as well, because he's experienced in large, Chicago. I mean, I mean, just like you guys.
I think it's fair to say that they're all more than qualified.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To break down. The question is, are we going to pay a certain amount of money to get started? Or are we going to right out of the gate, go to this company and say, we want you to pay X amount, up to X amount of dollars for this attorney to tell us what we want? Do you think?
Yeah, and I think by doing that, you're also going to find out on these people, we need the finance. I think I'll kick full payment, you know, just in Mr. Beerman saying that, that that is the train here. The train is that the proposers are paying the Lockard team for, for cities that are considering that approach.
So I have a question for both of the attorneys. Are you all looking at the performance? Are you looking at performance results of five years, ten years, fifteen years? I mean, is that something typical of the industry for an attorney to look at to validate a future business? I mean, do you look at market trends to see whether or not the business model that the individual has or that who, who is coming to us with is a novel idea or is it an old thing that's been done that is, you know, really in print before, just, you know, different types of businesses? You know, maybe it was simple in the past and now, you know. So, but I mean, is there a familiarity there of doing that kind of mathematical research and accounting that people revenues and stuff?
Mr. Weed?
Yeah, on, on my end, certainly, we'd want to look at the business side of it. This is kind of the question you're asking. We want to look at long-term, does this project make sense for the city five years out, ten years out, fifteen years out? That's one piece that we would put into the negotiations to figure out, okay, you know, does the proposal make sense for the city? What terms would we want that, that makes it a good long-term deal for the city? You know, in looking at the, the documents that Jerry provided us over the weekend, you know, the one thing that jumped out at me is that this is supposed to be a public-private partnership and there's no partnership that I could see in their proposal at this early stage. So those are all things that we would want to look at. It's not simply just looking at the, the strict legal issues. We'd want to look at what they want to do and whether it makes sense going forward, five or ten years. Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Beer?
So the typical public-private partnership, and, and again, I, I haven't had the opportunity to look at what they proposed. I, I heard a little bit about them proposing some kind of hemp processing. Typical, that is not a typical public-private partnership. A typical public-private partnership is they look at your community and they say, wow, this community really needs a, a, a solid waste processing plant. And so we'll come in and we'll partner with them and we'll get our revenue from the customer payments and we'll share those revenues with the city over the years in exchange for this privilege of providing this, you know, this public amenity. It's a concession. And I think that when you're looking at these deals, it's, you know, if, whether it's aviation-related or whether it's, it's environmental-related or, or it's recreational or entertainment-related, it's always a business deal. And you, and, and lawyers like Mr. Weed and myself, we look at the business terms to determine if those terms make sense. And yes, we will look at them, we will, we will run models out over a longer period of time. Although I recommend it to your attorney that you also have a consultant that is essentially a financial consultant, because I think they're in a better position to make those kinds of revenue evaluations over long periods of time than attorneys are typically. I mean, they, and, and if you don't have that, we, we could always work within teamwork with consulting accountants that can do that actuarial piece. But what we're looking at as attorneys is not only the, 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 the law, the legal requirements, the FAA regulations, the environmental laws, Florida law and your law. We're looking at how the entire deal is, is designed to provide the benefit to you from this partnership. And if it doesn't provide the benefit, an adequate benefit, it's just not worth doing.
Okay, should we ask for a recommendation as to how we should proceed with requesting funds for this analysis?
Like you can, you can have, you know, see those fees or you can have, you know, go ahead and see from now. But you have a hundred, seven thousand to start with.
But that's only if it was a signed agreement. I mean, right now, we.
As I understood it, it was good, they wanted us to hire a firm. And that was, you know, something to entice us to do so. Because I, I made the suggestion, they liked the suggestion, because I know nothing about aviation and FAA and so on. So they, they were offering that upfront. Now, I, we're not going, you know, if you, if you select somebody tonight, you're not going to start all of a sudden being on the clock. They're not, you know, hourly, you know, paying for, for doing nothing. We start to do a contract and things like that. We had time to find out from them, you know, is this, is this it? Is this all there is? In which case, you know, we, we have to, we have to consider, I think, what's going to do. Because I, I, obviously, there is disparity in the, in the amounts, but, you know, each have their own special benefit with regard to what they do. As I mentioned, Wyserota's got lots of P three experience and, but the Murray Law Firm just got lots of FAA and aviation experience. So it's a tough decision.
There's either party willing to look at the demand sheet and just give us a brief summary in the near future of basically laying out what it may do or that too much effort?
That's too much effort. That's diving into a forty-page contract.
I'm just talking about the demand part.
The demand part, you and I know what that means.
Yes, okay. Well, now they're hurting nasty, right? I like to smile.
So, Mr. I want to ask Mr. Beerman a question. Do you foresee any P and Z issues with this type of deal? We only have two types of, what do you call it, zoning, it's commercial and. No, I know, but I mean, you're talking, I see in the CV that he has stuff on, what do you call it, P and Z land use and stuff like that. So, well, I know that, but the question is very simple. Our airport only has commercial and, I'm sorry, industrial and conservation. So in your experience, is that sufficient for a contractor to come in and take over an airport? Or did you see changes in land use or something like that, when it has to do with hemp and agriculture, if they were to grow stuff out there as well?
It depends, yeah. I, I haven't, I haven't researched your code, so I don't, don't know what it allows. And I don't know what uses the, the proposer is proposing and how, or how that will affect uses on adjacent properties. So it, there's, there's some analysis that would be involved in any case. But, you know, it may, it may turn out that no changes need to be made and everything that this proposer is considering is already permitted under the current zoning and it's not going to affect any adjacent property. That may be the case. That was just one potential analysis.
That's negotiation.
Yeah, so then I just.
We cannot waive any requirements in your, in your plans.
Okay, so the other question, and it's not a question for them, it may be just a comment. You know, I've had conversations with one of the, with one of the individuals in the group, I think he's called all of us, is what I understand. And I understood that at some point in the future, they're looking at using the property as they see fit, was one of the things in their contract, as without any involvement or say from the city. But they were also looking, in that grain, they wanted to use it for agriculture. In other words, growing things out there. And, you know, I don't know anything about the water availability, all that stuff. So I guess the question is, there are a lot of unknowns that are not in the contract?
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's why I said, that's why I said the contract is not really worse than anybody.
No, no, and I get that.
You can never accept that, that's contract zone.
And that's my point, that's my point, is that right now that contract is all over the place. It just seems like we're going to have to pick and choose what we will allow or not allow or, or, you know, let them have a rain. What level of inquisitiveness is there from the attorney's side to figure those things out? If we're not going to be able to ask the contract, I mean, the, the businesses that, you know, what they're going to do, because it seems like their business model does change on a day-to-day basis, you know, how do we know that we're going to be getting full disclosure of what their land use is going to be? If there's not sufficient inquisitiveness from the attorneys to do that? Are we resting?
You're asking for something concrete that's not concrete until it's in a signed agreement.
No, exactly. But how would we know at some point? I guess what I'm getting at is, is this, the contract that's for us is so broad that, you know, are, are consultants going to be negotiating for us as well? Or are they just going to review it for legal?
Well, yeah, why don't we, why don't we make this a little simpler? So there's a lot of things that obviously we don't like. So why don't we just have another meeting with this company? And let's come up with a rough idea of what we want. And then we can also talk about, are they willing to pay any fees at all? I don't personally buy the story that they're already speaking for seven thousand dollars. I don't think that's their intention. So I think we need to make that gun sure that they are willing to spend that seven thousand dollars before we expend it. So I don't think we should contract with anybody until we at least get that far. Because they may say, you know what, guys, we're not. We could save everybody a lot of time. We can save everybody a lot of time.
That's fine, I was going to be pushing that that wasn't W.
What's the W?
Seven thousand.
Well, we only have our hands. But they didn't say something about a meeting and they showed something, their latest, what would they call it? Revised terms. Yeah.
Did someone want to say something? Any one of the two attorneys want to speak?
I was just going to offer that under Florida law, when you receive an unsolicited proposal, Florida law has a framework for considering an unsolicited proposal for a P3. And one of the things is that you can charge the proposer a fee to consider his, its proposal. And I think that you can refer back to that when you talk with the proposer and say, if you're serious, you'll post a fee, a significant fee, not, not just $7,000. Because I do think your attorney's fees, even to sort of make sense out of what they're proposing and give it a full analysis, whether you use our services or Mr. Weed's firm are still going to be in the $25,000 range at least. I think when you're looking at something like this, it's got a lot of different aspects and complexities to it. And it, you wouldn't want an attorney that's just going to give a cursory review and say, this is legal, that's legal. You, like you said, you want somebody who's going to advise you on not only what is legal, but what is beneficial and what your risks are going forward and what their risks are going forward. And what happens if it collapses or it doesn't go forward? And do you have some, you know, what do you get? And what do you get for your trouble or for what they've, for whatever damage or use they've made of it in the, in the, in the near term? There have to be performance measures in a P3 project that allow you to, you know, have an exit ramp and all those kinds of things. So I don't think, under any circumstances, even with the least expensive legal counsel, $7,000 covers it.
And I kind of agree with that too, I think that would count. Local more, how serious they are, if they wanted to put up 25,000 or more for us just to have a try and look at the situation, you know? Because 7,000, right, that doesn't sound like it could you even a minor legal description. So I think that would be a good start to say, look, are you willing to put up a minimum amount of money to hire for us, to hire a firm to look at it? And then if they're serious, they'd say yes. If they're not serious, I figure, well, you know, we're a startup company. We don't have funds right now, we have to do all that one, and maybe that's our answer.
Jerry, do you have any? Anything else to add or would you?
No, I think that that's good. I mean, I think he's got potentially more experience in the P3 and knows the ways that they're going to do, whatever firm you do, better than I do. And that's exactly why I advise you to. So perhaps what you need to do is be a motion to, to table this until your next, next meeting or postpone until indefinitely. Until you get the other, the people in from the fam. And they're able to talk to you, maybe we talk, everybody can talk at one time and make a decision.
But can we find out if they're, if they are willing to do $25 in advance or we have to leave today?
No, I think that's, that's not unrealistic based on what he's saying. It's going to cost $25,000 to responsibly review the deal and give us, you know, showing, proceed forward and wrap it up in the contract or walk away from it, then they need to put up $25,000. They have got $25,000. Bernard says it's time for us to walk away.
It's 25,000 to begin with.
Yes.
Well, it's a step to get to a point where, yeah, we're going to, we're going to work out a deal. You know, chances are very good, you know, and once they have to negotiate the paper contract associated with it, more, more money.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, I wish to postpone this till the next meeting.
And do we need a motion to ask them that question or is that?
No, I think he was asking to come in and answer questions, period. And, or they can do so, but they need to come in and answer questions and respond to some of the positions of, and then at that point you can make a responsible decision.
Is there a motion to table on that phone? We have a motion in a second. Any further questions?
I'll just pretend it's a, technically it's a motion to postpone definitely.
Leave us with it.
So, so Mark, you want to get in touch with them and ask them to come in at our next meeting?
Yeah, get ahold of them, see if they'll come in the next meeting. Okay, very good. We have a motion in a second. No further questions, we'll call roll.
Yes, number seven one, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Beerman, Mr. Weed, thank you very much for attending the meeting. I'm sorry, sorry you guys had to sit there so long.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
If you don't, if you, if you don't have a cone of silence, I welcome any members to give me a call anytime. I, my information is on the, on the credentials that we submitted.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I have number 11, discussion of candidates for vacant council seat. So the council had put out a request for those seeking to hold that position until our next election for our charter. We did receive five applicants. Some of the applicants are here and just simply like to thank everybody that was involved. Thank you for the time, thank you for the effort. We hope to see those that are not selected in the future. And with that, there was one candidate that really stuck out to me, Ms. Shirley Johnson. She provided a letter to us. She's someone who definitely works a lot in the community, been here a long time. She's a wonderful lady and she's a Christian lady as many of the others are as well. But I know that she, she does listen to the Lord and I appreciate that about her. And I'd just like to make the motion that we select Ms. Shirley Johnson for vacancy.
Second, I thought she rescinded her.
Can I just jump in?
Go ahead.
She did rescind it and then probably 2:30, 3 o'clock, maybe later than that, she contacted me and told me she wanted to resubmit it. And I put it on your, on everybody's desk up there.
There was a potential conflict that no longer exists, basically.
I thought that was the same letter that she had submitted on the first time. I'm sorry, I didn't see the other letter in all honesty.
It is the same one. I just printed it out and put it there. Like I said, she called me and told me that the conflict was worked out. I said, with the sheriff, she said yes. So I asked her and she asked to resubmit it, so that's why I said it up there.
Well, I'd like to make one comment. First of all, I'd like to thank all five of the people who put their names in there. I think that's really great for the city of Avon Park that we have five citizens that were, we wanted to step up and go ahead and take the place of our late councilman Stanley Spurlock. I think that's a good thing for, for him, if he was here to know that these five people would be interested. I think that, I know most of these people. I think most of them are probably qualified to do it. My only suggestion would possibly think about whether we did a number system to see if, if that would be a better serve than trying with only four people up here to vote. I'd hate to see too many, two, two votes or something like that. Is there any way, anybody would consider we did like a number system and create each one, two, five for each?
We have a motion in a second.
Okay, I can still have to make a comment.
I'd like to make a comment, it's all going to make a vote. You know, I look at it from the source of experience. I know Shirley as well, and I think that she's one of the, a stellar individual. But we have a lot of challenges above us right now. And between now and November, aside from this contract that's coming down, we have negotiation of the law enforcement contract with the sheriff. I want someone that's going to hit the ground running. I have discussed these names and other people in the community as well. And the whole thing is all about the experience. All of them have great experience in their rounds of work. But at the end of the day, Sharon Schuler has 21 years of sitting on this council. She's familiar with our budget, she's familiar with our codes, she's familiar with our PMZ code enforcement. She knows all of the ins and outs of our city. And, you know, bringing someone in and CRAs, everything that we do right now, she's, she has 21 years worth of. So for my selection, I mean, that's who I would have picked only because it's a short time between now and November, what is it, 10 months? Two huge things are coming down the pike, either also raising the mileage perhaps. But the decisions that we have before us require somebody that has deep knowledge of the things that have been going on with the city for the past 20 years. And to me, the qualifications of the individual that has all that experience, deep knowledge.
The other thing about that is the, we, that candidate in particular does have a lot of experience, but I really feel that we need to go forward with the city. We don't need to go backward with the city. And the thing is, Shirley is the type of person that is going to do the right thing regardless. And she has a lot of experience with the community, she has a lot of experience in law enforcement, as a matter of fact. She's a stellar, stellar person. I absolutely know that she's capable of the job. I support her 110%. Hopefully she sticks, sticks around longer. We need new people in this council. We don't need to go down memory lane. We do have a lot of big decisions to make. And like I said, we need a fresh pair of eyes. We don't need the same old, same old.
I'm sorry that you see her as same old, same old. I think she brings a lot of value and, you know, to discount all that time and make it sound like it's same old, same old is just not wrong. You've been on this board longer than me. Are you same old, same old? Jim, Brenda's been here for 20 years as well. Is that same old, same old? To put Sharon in that category, I think it's a disservice to her community.
You're making more of an issue than I was.
You basically said that she's old, old same old, same old. We're going backwards.
That's not exactly what it said.
No, exactly what you said. You want to hear us very honest.
It's not at all what I said, but anyway.
Well, that's how we came across.
There's been a motion.
I would just like to say, I welcome fresh eyes. I'm true enough, I've been here for 20-plus years. Yes, I am same old, same old. I welcome fresh eyes to this board, okay? Nothing against Sharon, but I just think a person with, with experience, Shirley has served on our CRA board. She's attended numerous meetings prior to your existence here, uh, Florido. And she's been very active in the community, not just the South Side, the entire city of Avon Park. So I, I welcome her view. And I do think that she would, if she's nominated to this board, I do think she will hit the ground running. That's just my thoughts.
You know what, I'll say one thing about Sharon Schuler. I have a lot of respect for her. She served this community, not only on this board, 27 years, but also served the city as a businesswoman. And I think to make a comment that we don't want to go backwards, I don't think that that was quite appropriate.
She sits on her PMZ board right now too.
Yeah, so I, well, like I said, I started off, I think there's five good people here. I know most of them. I know we got a motion on there and second, so that's fine. I'm ready to move forward, but I just wanted to make that comment. But I think that, I know four of those people very well and I think that four of those people would probably do a great job, just from my own opinion.
Agreed. All right.
Fifth one, I don't know.
Yes, you have to come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record.
I think, I'm here, I'm Ronald Garcia, San 17 West, that's the street, Avon Park. I even thinking that, first of all, to do my community service and I appreciate you to everyone who's helped you do and maintaining our community. I thought this was going to be a different process. I thought we were all going to get a chance to come up here and explain who we are, what we do and so forth. I see you just made a motion and decision in a second. And to be honest with you, I really want to sit in that seat to do my community service that I know they need right now in this time of need. There's a real need. But hearing that there's a lady here who has 21 years of experience, right now is not the time for an amateur. It's not the time for somebody who's going to do the right thing just because if I'm a Christian, I'm a chaplain, I'm a pastor, I'm a minister. Okay, I would do the right thing. I wouldn't sell myself to nobody. But her experience, 21 years, I'll put myself aside and run in November. Run in November and start fresh. But if anybody should get this position right now, it should be that lady, 21 years of experience. I think we should rethink that motion. And I'm up for that seat and I'm putting myself aside. I'm just saying, with all the respect to everybody here, I think the right decision would be her. 21 years experience, you need her right now. She knows the ins and outs. I'm just saying, that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
I think you got it a little mixed up. The 21 years is the, is the ex-council member who used to run, who used to sit up in here. I think what the mayor was saying is that we needed some fresh ideals. The lady that you're speaking of, Ms. Johnson, has served our community for many years. But I don't know if it's been 21 years. I've served up here for 21 years.
Right, no, and I know it's 21 years, but I'm saying that she has the experience right now, sitting on a board who knows the ins and outs of this council. She should get, it's my opinion though, because as a Christian man, as a Christian woman, as a Christian man, yeah, will do the right thing. But I would go with experience, I'll put myself aside. I will run in November to get a fresh set of eyes. But right now we have the airport that needs a lot of help. We have the community, we have Main Street. You know the problem, you know what's been going on.
I'm well aware.
And having somebody just because you know they'll do the right thing is not the right thing to do. I, I want somebody sitting up there with experience.
The thing about experiences from others is that with experience comes a voting record. With experience comes a job detail. You know what that person's going to do. By selecting Shirley, I'm basically saying that I also like Shirley, I know what she's going to do. I like how she's done things in the past. So that's the type of person that I think is the best fit for the city. I know this person that you're speaking of. I don't feel that you know this person as well as any of us do because we've served with her. So, you know, it's not really fair for you to say that.
Okay, so if it's not fair, then I feel obligated, but then why not just go and ask the other four people that are here and ask questions so that we can answer them and not just go up on the letter so that we can all?
Are you saying that you, that you just want to state your case? Because if you want to do that, you're more than welcome.
No, but I'm saying, because you just came up and said, I have a person that I want to nominate. This is the person who seconds it, then there was a second. So we all came here, we all submitted letters.
I read your letter.
Right, and then Vice Mayor Bernard said, why don't we do a number system, you know, to make it fair.
But that doesn't make it any more fair, sir.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the floor. There's no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember, right? Yes, councilmember seven one? No. Deputy Mayor Bernard?
I'll say yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson, thank you very much for your application. Is there anything that you'd like to say?
Please do.
We'll have to get, we'll have to get you up here, look.
Pick a mic, any mic.
Shirley Johnson, so two weeks ago in court, longtime member of Hattler County, since 1956. One age right here. Only thing I want to say is thank you for the opportunity. I will work hard, I will jump in running and I will make sure that I always, always do the right thing. And when you're doing the right thing, as the facts are said, as you may say it a little bit different, it's always the right thing to do. I will serve this, this community into God be the glory. I came with the idea that whatever God says, I'll do it. That's my, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Mayor, can I?
Welcome.
Go ahead.
I, I had the pleasure to call all of them and let them know they could come tonight and that. I got to tell you, all of them appeared very genuine and wanting to do what's right, you know, for the city and that. I just want to thank the ones here and also I had a real nice talk with, I call him Mayor Schuler, but I just want to pass that on, that I appreciate all of them that did put in, whether they're selected or not, but they were all very nice and I had nice conversations with each of them. I wish I would have, that's a lot.
Very good. So Ms. Shirley will serve at our next meeting then?
All right, City Manager, important. As you know, I sent out that we were awarded, I got the notice of intent award on the, the hardening grant for the.
the, um, hardening grants for the, um, fire station. And actually, we've, I've got a, uh, meeting to be on this coming week, or this week. But, um, I got an email from Corbett yesterday saying that we did not, we were not awarded any of the mitigation infrastructure grants. However, he did follow up, he says, we can resubmit them. And, um, he suggested to get our score up, um, we were recommended finishing plans and specs, maybe come up with some leverage, maybe a state revolving fund, and, um, so we're gonna get with Corbett to see about resubmitting them. He, well, not them, he suggests we just put in for one, or our biggest one, the wastewater. I've already heard from Carl Cool, if he's willing to help us out, he was a great help on, um, putting them in, but we weren't willing to.
Do you know if Corbett applied for any other grants, or any other communities?
I, I don't know that. In fact, I tried to pull these ones up, and I couldn't find them on to see who actually got awarded them. But I'm gonna try to find it out, actually, who got them, because the hardening grant, I don't know if you pulled that up, Sebring got about seven of them.
But they were all fire building related?
Well, no, they were, um, there was two or three fired, but the other ones were, uh, generators, if you're walking around.
I didn't see that.
Did we apply for any?
They got a total of, I think it came, I mean, I didn't get the calculator out, but it was close, probably fifteen, sixteen thousand. Because actually, their chief called our chief and congratulated.
You asked what other projects he had applied for?
Yeah, I'm just curious if there were any other, what was successful that we could apply for and make them successful here, you know, just rather than?
Maybe they put it in, it was on fire, is what you're getting at?
What I read on the website was strictly fire buildings, and so, you know, their historic buildings are the ones, and we only have one building, so that's the one that got money for us. I didn't see wastewater generators or anything, but.
Yeah, and Sebring got, and, and I mean, like the chief said, we, you know, that wasn't brought up, that, that that could even be applied for different things like that. But yeah, the, the emergency buildings were number one on most of them. But if you look at, see how much money, I think there's, when Rick's gone, he brought up about the Miami shores, one of them, and they got millions of dollars of things down there, so. But yeah, I'm, I'm interested, I'd like to know who, who did get them, but I, I've Googled the heck out of it. Yesterday, I turned.
You're saying that Corbett can reapply for other grants with the same application?
No, no, he's saying that we can reapply, we can resubmit for these infrastructure. He's suggesting, and again, I haven't talked to him, I just got this yesterday, um, that he's suggesting we just go after one instead of three of them, like we did. He's suggesting we go after the, um, the big one, the wastewater, which that was almost eleven and a half million, so.
So will he apply at risk, or he didn't want us to pay?
I don't know, I haven't talked to him.
Because we paid him for the other ones, right?
We did, yeah.
Well, before he applies, shouldn't we know if he's in the charges?
Yes.
If we want, we have to say we want to apply before we made it there, we will.
No, but I mean, he's gonna talk to him.
No, I'm gonna talk.
You know, what other grants are out there?
Obviously, just ask him if they'll do it at risk, obviously.
Okay.
Nothing further on the grants? We got the church service center?
Yeah, myself and Rick Whalen and David, our, uh, new public work superintendent. Met with Tom, um, had a nice meeting, he met both of them, and their work, he's gonna be working on some, some plans for us to get in front of you and what they're looking for over there. And, um, he's actually working with, um, he's got David's number, so we should be seeing those pretty soon.
Good. Okay.
And the other one was, it, it was brought up, I, I think it was actually Jim brought up about openings, you know, and hiring staffs where we're at, especially on the new positions we were, um, given in this year's budget. I asked David to just briefly go over that.
Okay, currently, we, um, of the new positions, uh, only two of the new positions have currently been filled. Actually, four of them, but two of those are partials. The sanitation supervisor and one of the park and sports facilities maintenance technician, uh, filled. We have one of the two stormwaters filled, one of the two additional street equipment operators filled. Um, and all the rest of the new positions have not been filled. Um, and even the push to get the C and D technicians were down four, and we've had, since we put it out on application. And it's just, in, in talking to Rick and Rick and whatnot, it's just, we're not putting up enough money for people to come here and work. So, they said people will not come here starting at eleven or twelve bucks an hour. So, um, and, and the numbers are showing that, af- after being out, basically, uh, our last guy resigned in September, and then we added the additional three, and since that time, we've had one. And, and we are advertising everywhere.
And what position is that for now?
This is, this is for the collections and distribution technicians. Guys that go out, you know, dig and have to repair the water sewer lines and go up to the houses on call and everything else. And, and that's just where you're, you're not getting anybody applying for the job, so.
It, but it isn't just money. We're not getting people putting in the, for any of these jobs. And everybody we talked to, the same thing, everybody's having a hard time, and now that they want to give out more money, we're probably, I was talking to somebody today, it's probably gonna be less people putting in with, I mean, they're talking about, what somebody told us today, one of our employees said, if it goes through, that passes, they can get, they're gonna make seven thousand dollars, between him and his wife and his kids, so. Um, it isn't just the money and, um, but, um, here recently, we've had a few, aren't they interviewing? We actually had a second stormwater guy, and he lasted a week and said, this ain't what I want to do, and, I think he was, thought he was gonna stand around and be the boss, but.
All right. I haven't talked to anyone in a couple of years that actually has all the help that they're looking for. So, I know the job market is pretty tough out there for employers now. Um, basically, anybody that wants to work probably can, so.
No, there's no doubt about it. Like I said, everybody I talked to is going through the same thing, whether the sheriff's office or Sebring anywhere else.
Well, and the, and the competition that we're facing too, is a lot of companies have got to the point where they will offer off-the-street people sixteen dollars an hour, just to come in the door, immediate benefits, leave, sick leave, two weeks vacation, I mean, right in the door, and it's available the next day. And, and we can't compete with that. And, um, you know, if, like the one kid, he said, well, what are you offering, you know, to do position X? And we told him, and he goes, well, okay, here's another company I'm going with, and they pay all this stuff, and the health insurance and all this stuff, it, it, what do you guys have for health insurance? And I mean, when they've got this effy blue, and it's like the, the diamond plan of everything. And again, you know, they're in a different bracket of company, but still, that's the kind of things that we're competing against. A kid that's twenty-two that says, I'll come and work for you, because it's city, it's long-term, it's retirement, but you're not even close to what these other companies are paying, so I, I've had immediate benefits and, and higher pay right off the bat.
Yeah.
Can't do anything about that.
Do you have any recommendations, uh, things that we could possibly do to up our chances of finding people, or?
There's all sorts of things that we could do, but this year financially, we're not structured for that. I mean, we, we would have to take and bump up our pay structure to come close to that. We, you know, we have the, the benefits that we've got, that we tailor out, that people can't even touch them for six to months to a year. But the problem is, other than sick leave, you know, if they quit after ten or eleven months, we still have to pay them. Whether they booked it or not, we still owe it to them, so why not give it to them from day one, start accruing? Um, because if they're gonna take leave, they're gonna take leave. And, and if they don't have leave on the books, then they're just a, a day without pay. And to them, it's more important to take the day off, to be with their family, or take their kid, or go to school for an award ceremony or something else. So, these are the kind of things that make us the losing entity of trying to win employees over, um, fighting against that.
Well, perhaps, uh, the suggestions that the staff has can be given to the council to possibly adopt at our next budget.
Yep.
Well, and, and those would be things that, that I think with Mark and I, and whatever mystery person, Danielle, and, and anybody else, that we can sit down and say, here's what we need to do to be competitive, um, you know, to, to bring this in, so that we can try and attract more people just for that reason, you know?
But, uh,
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but the, the end of the day really is, we're just not getting applicants on a lot of people.
I mean, it's a lot of these people start off that I am looking at, how many days I get off and that stuff, I mean, I, I don't disagree with David, but it's just, we're not, when, when we have a position out here for stormwater, and really don't need much experience, because we're gonna send you to get your stormwater certified, you know, we would, you would thank people who be putting in for that job, and you know, it's, um, you don't have to have a lot of skills, um, to do it, and we'll train you in that, and same for the other, what was the other one that?
Well, but, but again, that's, it's a starting pay.
Sanitation job, I mean, finding someone with a CDL license, that's where the pay comes in.
Yeah.
And finding some, because there's so many trucking companies there, that are pulling these people up, they don't mind traveling and that. So, but right now, um, it's, it's hard time finding a, we've got one of our guys with a CDL wants, he's put in, in-house, we advertise for, um, Todd's job for, um, code enforcement, and he's, wants out of sanitation and said, well, you're gonna take a pay cut, because you can't come over at the same pay, he said, I don't care, I don't know. So there's a CDL license, we gotta try to find a, to drive the garbage truck, so.
Yeah, I have a couple of friends that, uh, recently acquired their CDLs, they're both found jobs within a month. Uh, one of them was at eighteen bucks an hour, I think the other one's at like seventeen, ten or something like that. Good job, just, just got their license, so.
And we're not even in the ballpark.
Where we win, I think oftentimes is the benefits, because we have a great insurance program, you know, FRS on top of that. I don't know what your friends are making if they get insurance and all that, but that is in addition to, what is that, about fifty-six hundred dollars? On top of the regular pay?
But, but Marie, you, you say it's a great, but when you look at it, and we pay the insurance, I agree with that. But when a person goes to the doctor and has to pay a sixty-five dollar copay to see the doctor, that's not a great insurance plan. I mean, that, that, that's kind of a, I might as well pay my own insurance, or get Obamacare, or Biden care, or whatever the care is right now. Um, and that's something that I have to look into for next year, because our insurance, health insurance rates are still projected to go up sixty percent of what they were last year. And there's no way that our council or the city will be able to afford a sixty percent increase to pay someone's health insurance.
But our rates went down, we did HSA this last.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, our, still our three hundred and seventy-four dollars is projected to go up sixty percent because of COVID, per, per what the, the health brokers are saying. And that's conservative. Some of them are gonna go higher than that, if we stick with the basic low-end insurance that we have. And that's where.
What we have is low-end?
Yes. I do.
So when you make your recommendations, as, uh, the mayor had said, can you include that into it?
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But that's, everybody's gonna deal with these.
Oh, yeah.
Insurance going up. I mean, I can, look at myself, how much mine's gonna go up paying for, you know? And it, with retirement, I, I'll tell you what I pay every month, I pay a thousand dollars, so, um. So there's people that I talk to that, 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 you know, they're worried about theirs going up that much, so. It's something everybody's gonna have to deal with, whether they're gonna go up sixty percent, I don't know, that's their, that's kind of what they're saying now.
And, 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 you know, Mayor, like you were saying, work, employees right now are hurting. What we're fighting against is people being paid two thousand plus dollars a month to stay home.
Yeah.
Well, why, why should I go to work if I can stay home for two thousand dollars, when you're gonna pay me ten fifty-six to hang on the back of a garbage truck? Again, I, that's no money to me. I can stay home for another, you know, twelve, sixteen plus weeks.
Yeah.
And then consider it, and maybe it'll be another extension on top of that, and where it goes another, you know, six months. So, and that, that is, since Mark and I have been fighting this before the fiscal year started, we've been fighting the COVID and fighting just that, that people are getting free money supposedly, and don't want to work if they don't have to. And, and it's, it's a difficult beast to conquer if people just do not want to work for that kind of money.
Anything new about the financial director? I mean, I think that's something we, that we need to really work on. Is there, could we hire a consulting firm to do that job if we can't hire somebody as an employee? And I mean, from what I gather, you haven't had any offers whatsoever. In a couple of months, we need somebody to work on that budget. So we need to come up with a plan B, one way or the other.
No, we agree with, in fact, I talked to David Friday and today about that, whether we have to advertise part-time or try to bring in a, companies got somebody to, to do it to us, because we're not getting any applicants. And again, we've heard from some, it's, it's pay. You know, our pay is low for that. When I look at other ones, they are, they are much higher, but.
Didn't we have a consultant, a firm that do this for us before?
Still are.
Yeah, so.
We, we contract with Brandon Williams to do our books. Um, I did talk, talk to John Davis, he did offer to help if we needed to, to help prepare the budget.
I, I tried to steal one of his people, but.
Yeah.
She wanted six digits.
We're not offering, offering enough money to.
He's, he's pretty high in our.
Anything else, City Manager's report?
I'd just like to give Danielle kudos for, thanks for not only filling in as the finance director, but also the, um, city clerk.
I got a question for you.
Good job, Danielle. Good job, Danielle.
Yes.
An update on the, the demo of the Wilder Building?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up.
Oh.
Friday, I called out to EPI. And they're so busy, they don't answer the phone, I guess, but they, I got a call back from my guest one, the boss out there, and he was gonna call me today to give me, because I said, I'm going in front of council, I'm gonna give them a day, a date when you're gonna start this, and he said, no, I understand, he said, we are so busy. And he said, that's not, I forgot about you, we got so many things, and that's just kind of us. He goes, it's not like we're gonna handle it, but it's a, it's a little, takes a little more time, because we gotta cut the building apart from the other one, and getting it down, they, they think it was gonna take us about thirty days because of the location, excuse me, to get it picked up. I said, well, that's nice, but we still need it done. And today, I called them three times before I came here, and I left my, um, cell phone to them and told them to call me. And I have not received a call, so tomorrow morning I will be calling them again, but every time we call them, and it was Andy calling before for it, they don't answer the phone.
Do you have Tal's cell phone, by chance?
Who's?
Tal Rancourt, the owner?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Do you have it?
We'll get it for you.
Sure, okay, I appreciate it.
Because if they can't do it, then you just say that so we can move on to somebody else.
They, they told me they can do it, but they've taken on a ton of work, but they shouldn't be knocking us down to the, you know, knocking out the easy stuff first, so.
Right.
What about the brick building? Has anything happened with that at all?
The, the brick building, I gave, um, David everything on that, and Rick, and I told them to, um, to get working on that, I gave it, the, the, uh, the awning that's got the holes in it. They, um, I told them back then, and, and actually, I'll, I'll ask you, they, they believe it needs to be taken off there. And I guess Robert brought that up long before I got here.
You're talking about the awning?
The awning, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You're not the building.
Yeah, I didn't say, oh, the awning, yeah. But it's in really bad shape, so.
Does it have like distort hardware or any of that stuff?
That's what I asked them, and, um, I don't really have the answer to that right now, because I said, is that part of the distorted?
I mean, I know it has, what, plywood?
Yes.
Made in there and stuff, I just, but it has those things that come out of the, was that the jigsaw?
No, it's got, it's got the metal that's holding it up, and that's what I asked them about it. You know, is that structural length thing due, or is it gonna?
Okay. So, anything else to give the city?
No.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing the opposition, we are now.